We've got the board and everyone else named, and I think we've got Chris Clark and Ashley. From your Harold.
Okay, so we're ready to go?
We are ready to go.
Okay. So we'd like to call this meeting to order. We will dispense with a pledge of allegiance due to the make sure some of us in this meeting. The first item of business tonight is to approve the agenda. So I'd like a motion to approve the agenda for the meeting of June 24th, 2020.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections that you'd like to make to the agenda? Okay, there being none, all those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Okay, that's, we've got an agenda. The first item of business on the agenda is to go into executive session to discuss negotiations. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I'm moved.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to executive session now, I think. Dave, do we do this by excluding people from the meeting, or do we go to another location?
I think what we're gonna ask the others to do is to log into the location and stay here. I think everyone should have received that, I just checked, just because it's too simple. Perhaps 257 isn't Ashley, okay, maybe I was mistaken.
Oh, no, that is me, I see the phone number and I will dial that.
Yeah, well, we have just a few minutes actually, but we're trying to, trying to how to do this, we thought that was the simplest way.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
So Ashley's gone. And I think we have only our board members here.
Right now, right now, you have the board members, Christine.
Oh, my goodness.
So. Spoke too soon. Did I lose my slide? So there are, there were two more scheduled after that, it went Western New York, Central New York, and Mohawk Valley. Valley and down to Westchester, and then New York City and Long Island, as you can imagine, I would think that's probably a pretty large meeting. So, so, so those meetings are current, we're waiting, they, we have been told that guidance and recommendations from the Board of Regents Task Force for reopening will be available, will be issued by July 13th. So a number of people from our region participated, a couple of them, I mentioned Lori as one, I'm looking at Aaron, Aaron was, was on as well. But our, our, our region was, was well represented, and hopefully we get some concrete guidance. But the, the, the question remains is, is what will we be facing in terms of, of the status of the spread of COVID? So, so, you know, right now, we don't know, what we don't know about the fall, so we're planning for different scenarios. And the schools in our region are replicating, you know, this, this type of planning by, by considering the three different scenarios. Remote, as it is, return to school, as we always did, or some blended format. The next piece with, with advocacy. If you recall, there were three conditions that, that schools had to meet in order to achieve, I guess approval would be the word, or meet the conditions to have the days that we were not, that, that we were teaching remotely count towards the 180, 80-day waiver, so that their aid would not be reduced. Plan was the obvious one, but also schools had to develop plans for feeding students throughout the crisis, and then to account for childcare for essential workers. That one kind of morphed as time went on, and it became much more of a regional approach. Childcare councils in, in different parts of the state, the Capital District Childcare Council did a night of, of supporting our region, we were working in concert with them to direct parents to childcare opportunities. Well, this, there was, there was a memo fresh off the press today with the expectation that we will, that our school districts will continue to do this through the summer. It will look a little different, I think, I think the childcare for essential workers is, is in place, and that will probably continue as is. But we have to account for feeding students who typically may have access to, to school meals. I don't know that there is a concrete requirement that we will have to deliver the meals in the same exact manner that we did through this crisis. I do have the, the memo that I'll include for you in, in our Friday report, I'll pass that along with, with the details. But I think there is the opportunity to, to ensure that, that different, first, first of all, if there are community agencies who do that, that type of, type of work in the summer, that we connect with them and support their efforts to connect with families. And also just to ensure that, since, since there likely won't be door-to-door delivery, that the locations are accessible to the children that, that need them. So that was something that really was a, was a change for, for our schools, those, those two areas. You know, you, you would imagine, schools are, are very, very much used to accounting for learning. And, and the continuity of learning plan was, was something that, that everyone was able to put together pretty effectively and, and pretty quick. Grasping the idea, but, but it was critically important that, that these children continued to have access to nutritious breakfasts and lunches throughout, throughout the closing, because food insecurity would, would have simply exacerbated the, the situation for our kids during, during this closure. And then, you know, we hadn't been in, in the daycare business prior to this, but, but, you know, we need to make sure that, that medical personnel are, are able to support the sick, and certainly want to make sure that the food and supply chain remains intact. So, so that's something that our, that our schools did, did a nice job with this spring, and they're going to be expected to continue into, you know, through the summer. Regarding leadership, I had the opportunity last night to be a guest speaker with a class from SUNY Plattsburgh and, and Dr. Mike Picorillo's Administrative Preparation, he teaches in the Administrative Preparation Program. I, I talked to them about leadership, I, I am in particular about my transition in my first year here as, as District Superintendent, and the difference in, in serving a local educational entity and then a Bosse's. So I had a nice chat with, with over 28 prospective administrators last night, and I think six or seven of them were from our region, even a couple were from our organization. And other informational items, we do have some business that, that we need to, to address in June. So on, on July 1, we had scheduled our reorganizational meeting, which is when we can have that. We also had a special board meeting, a subsequent board meeting scheduled for July 1 to take care of, of some business. But what we've, what we've come to understand is, is, is there are some things that have to be acted upon in the month of June. So I will, or Christine will be sending out a communication to schedule very, very brief special meeting to, to address some, some contracts and some, some other items that, that we need to ensure have your approval during the month of June. So we'll shorten your day on the first, but we're gonna ask you for a few minutes out of there. And that concludes my report, and if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer, or we can move on to Dr. Hornforest.
Does anyone have any questions for Dave before we move on? Okay, then Lori, you're up.
Okay, first agenda item is unmute my, my speaker, so hello, everybody, thanks for this opportunity to say hello. So a couple of things I, I want to mirror how Dave is presenting information to you as well, so we'll start with partnership. Tonight, SUNY Cobles Gill has been a partner with us for our AgP Tech programs since we started the program four years ago. And when we had a transition in our administrative role at AgP Tech in January, the, the new principal, the interim principal who came in, Kevin Warren, said, Lori, I think we need to have, do you mind if I reach out to Cobles Gill, I think we need to make a closer link? Forge that link, the partnership a little bit, and I said, oh, that's amazing. So he was starting to set up, of course, this started in February. We were having meetings with our Cobles Gill partners, we were driving down there, Kevin and I would drive down. Matt Davis, who'll be speaking in just a minute, also was joining in on those meetings. We had our school counselors join in, we had four of their key leadership people, we had Susan Zimmerman, who is the Provost, and the Vice President for Academic Affairs, we had Tim Moore, who is the Dean of the School of Ag and Natural Resources. Gail Wentworth is the interim Dean of Business, Liberal Arts and Sciences. And Debbie Richards, who's the Assistant to the Provost, is really our point person for anything that's ag-related, and she's really our, our linchpin when we have issues. But those meetings were set up primarily to make sure that everybody understands both sides, that if there were any concerns, we were addressing those immediately, and, and that we're really a good partner to the college. So those meetings now, the last one, well, we were in February, and then March happened, so we remember what happened in March. And we, everything got, got set aside a little bit for instruction. And what happened was on June 1st, we had a virtual meeting, and we are going to schedule those meetings with Cobles Gill, it'll be the first Monday of every month. And for now, they're virtual, but it gives us an opportunity to talk about the programming for our children, the scheduling, and make sure that all of our issues are resolved. So they've been an amazing partner to us, just as FMCC has been for both our foothills and our original P-Tech program. And speaking of P-Tech programs, I'd like to turn it over to Matt Davis, who has been our principal for almost a year, so much like Dave's first year in his new role, it's been a very quiet year, no big changes going on for Matt either. So he, he's gonna share some information with us now, thanks, Matt.
All right, good evening, everyone, and thank you, Dr. Hornforest, for asking me to share this evening. I am sharing my screen, and I just want to confirm that everyone can see my slides here, and.
Got it.
Perfect, and I'm going to go full screen. Can we still see my slides?
I got it.
Perfect, okay, so I just want to share some updates around the P-Tech program this evening, specifically as it relates to the COVID-19 closure and the work of our students during that time. So our, our main goal was set forth from State Ed and from Dr. Ziskin and Dr. Hornforest, was to ensure continuity of learning. So between March 16th and June 17th, P-Tech staff continued to teach and students continued to. Our instructional methods, of course, shifted into online learning. But for our college and the high school courses, where students are in college credit, taught by high school instructors, as well as for our Regents courses and other high school elective courses, learning really did continue, I'm not gonna call it a seamless transition, but, you know, it, it was able to continue for the most part online. So our students taking courses at FMCC did get an extended spring break in March of two weeks. But after that time, instruction continued with college professors, and those courses wrapped up the beginning of May. And for the most part, our students did very well, and I'll, I'll share a little bit more about that on a future slide. So our teachers provided mostly asynchronous instruction to students throughout the week. And, and really, all that means is that students were able to work at the same pace. So at the beginning, you know, I, I envisioned that we would have video classes running at specific times throughout the day, similar to the school day, and what we found is that, that really just didn't improve for students and families. Students oftentimes had additional responsibilities besides their schoolwork, so maybe babysitting younger siblings, or maybe even caring for an older relative who was at home. So the asynchronous learning allowed students to watch a recorded lesson and do what was appropriate for them. And I think our students enjoyed sleeping in a little bit, too, I think that was maybe their favorite part of, of learning. But, you know, like I said, the vast majority of them continued to engage in instruction. And in order to provide synchronous learning for students, each teacher offered one weekly 45-minute video lesson where the whole class was online. And that was a required weekly video lesson for students, but they also offered optional check-ins through video chat with students throughout the week as well, as needed, based on student need. So, you know, I think the word adaptability really defines how our students responded and how our teachers responded to this as well. Our teachers tracked student participation in a spreadsheet every week, and we had a team of people who were responsible for contacting families when students were not participating as expected. And with the exception of maybe one student who we were not in contact on a comprehensive basis, we were able to get in touch with all of our students and get them on track, you know, nine times out of 10. So like I mentioned earlier, the asynchronous learning allowed for flexibility for students' home situations that are unpredictable. And the vast majority of our students participated in and passed classes. We had very few students fit the courses at the college level and the high school level this semester. And I'll share on a future slide some statistics related to that. We did have some students struggling with mental health and various things going on at home, technology issues. They did negatively impact academic performance, I don't, I don't want to say that every one of our students was successful, because that's, that's just not the case. We did have some students who had some severe mental health challenges related to the isolation, social isolation around quarantine during the COVID closure. And of course, there's always going to be things at home that prevent students from full participation. But we were able to resolve most of the technology issues that students faced. We provided mobile internet devices to our students who did not have consistent home internet access, and we mailed replacement laptops to students as needed. I think that I made more trips to the post office in the last three months than I've made my entire life. But we shipped, I think, somewhere around 35 laptops to students over the course of the closure, just due to them breaking or having some technical glitch that couldn't be fixed through remote access from our IT department. So our leadership, staff, and students all had to be incredibly adaptable during this time. So our student progress is a key measure of the success of what we did during COVID-19. So failure rates in college courses were roughly the same as usual. I would say we probably only had three or four students who probably would have passed if they were in, you know, in school in person, who ended up failing, mostly due to some personal crises that they faced surrounding mental health. I, I would just highlight that mental health support was our biggest challenge during the COVID closure. When students are in school, we're able to use our relationships with them in person to impact their, their mental health situations and counsel them in ways that we just could not do when we're doing it through video chat or over the phone. So students were much more able to not reply, or, you know, hide their, their true feelings in a video chat or a text message, an email, a phone call. And so that was definitely our biggest challenge, and if we're still online in the fall, we're, we're definitely thinking about ways to improve our mental health support to students. Our counselors did a fantastic job of supporting students with the methods that we have right now, and getting students in touch with free therapy services that New York State put out for, for all residents of the state during the COVID closure. But as I said, that was a distinct and unique challenge that we're gonna be planning for ways to improve over the summer. So currently, we have 34 students taking summer classes online at FMCC. The vast majority of those students are taking those courses to get ahead on credits. P-Tech students can take courses in the summer and the winter to speed up their graduation trajectory. And many of our rising juniors have elected to do so, but also many of our rising seniors and 13th and 14th grade students are doing so as well. We will have 10 students enrolled in HFM Summer School for Credit Recovery for courses that they failed this school year. And I guess to summarize our student progress, I really was very proud of our students. We, we had a grading policy this, this year that took into account the lack of equity that students faced with online learning. So some of our students, of course, had incredibly supportive home situations, where parents were looking over their shoulder, making sure they were getting their work done, others did not, and they had various other barriers that prevented them from being successful. So what we did is we took the first three quarters average of their grades and compared that to the average of their grades for the whole year. And we took whichever average was higher for their overall grade, so that students who were not able to be as successful during online learning in the fourth quarter were not punished for those barriers that, again, they probably didn't have a lot of control over. So as a result of that, the vast majority of our students were able to earn credit for their courses and not have to attend summer school or any other credit recovery method. So our teachers and staff, of course, stepped up to the challenge. They converted courses to online learning practically overnight, they had a weekend to really plan for this, between March 13th and March 16th. Our staff, our nurses, secretary, staff, teacher aides, and counselors took on additional duties to keep lines of communication open with students, making extremely frequent parent contact. That really was the key to student success. We also had three of our teachers who participate in our academic club throughout the school year, who also took on extra duties in parent and student contact. And without those folks really working the phones and email, text messages, Schoology throughout the course of the closure, many of our students would have remained disconnected. But because of their efforts, a lot of our students became connected and really needed that accountability in those check-ins in order to stay on task with their work. So our teachers, of course, published high-quality lessons using our learning management system, Schoology, video chat, and other online resources, and overall, I would say that P-Tech was at the forefront, at the cutting edge of, of what online learning looked like. During the COVID closure, we probably did a lot more of it than other schools before online, before the closure started March 13th. Most of our courses were in an online ecosystem even prior to the closure. So the transition was less difficult for our staff, and all of our students have laptops and internet devices given to them by the school. So the transition was just less of an issue for them in general. So. That is. So it appears as though my computer has frozen, so let me see if I can unfreeze it. Here we go, last slide. So like Dr. Ziskin mentioned earlier, we are having a completion ceremony, and we are inviting all of our board members to that event. You're gonna be receiving formal paper invitations in the mail, I believe they were mailed out yesterday. We're very proud to be honoring 28 completers in our program this year. Two of those students from AgP Tech and 26 of them from the original HFM P-Tech. Our ceremony will take place on July 7th at 6:00 PM with a rain date of Thursday, July 9th, again at 6:00 PM. It'll be a drive-in style ceremony at FMCC. And each student will be allowed to bring three guests, and their families will sit in what we're calling cone zones, which will be areas of the parking lot at FM marked off with traffic cones. That'll be separated by six feet on all sides. One student at a time will be able to go up on stage and be recognized for their accomplishments of earning both an associate's degree and a high school diploma. Some of those students did that in as few as four years, others took five or six. Students, of course, can stay in the P-Tech program for six years, and we're very proud of all of our students who managed to do this despite all the challenges they faced in the spring semester with the COVID closure. So the ceremony will be, have most of the parts of a traditional ceremony, of course, with appropriate social distancing and mask-wearing by all attendees. One thing for our board members, if you're planning to come, you will have to bring your own chair. And I know that probably sounds a little bit strange, but it's just the easiest way of handling it, and also just making sure that there's no cross-contamination. If you bring a chair from home, you'll be able to ensure that there's, you know, the only germs that are on it are your own. And that, you know, we're not gonna be spreading anything as a result of using chairs from FMCC or, or sharing chairs from other sources. So we'd be honored if you would attend, that's everything I've got for this evening. Anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thanks so much, Matt, that was a great summary from, from what's been going on since March 13th, when we, when we closed our school doors. Board members, any questions for Matt, clarifications, before I just wrap up my presentation tonight, my, my board presentation?
He's done a great job.
Thank you.
And I only have one comment, and that is, that I think one of the nice side effects of having to conduct instruction remotely is that we were able to make maybe greater parent contact than we could if we had been in school. And I think, no matter what form we're returning to school in the fall, we should, we should remember the, the techniques that we use to get to parents, and hopefully be able to still leverage those in some format. I know I was working in a school and there were parents that we just never saw, and in COVID, we were in, in touch with them two or three times a week. So I think if we can remember those lessons, Matt, and if, when we get back in school, continue to use the technology to try to keep parents engaged, then maybe we have a, you know, somewhat of a, of a positive outcome. I, you know, when in fact we do get back at school.
I also think it's, it helped parent appreciation of what teachers do.
Definitely.
So you're absolutely right, that everything wasn't bad, it was difficult and it was challenging, but we, we learned a lot of things also that I think can be beneficial to our instructional programming. The last piece, and Dr. Brooks, I'll just say, Dave, can you bring my, your screen back up, or, thank you, Christine. The last piece, and Harry, you, I, it was almost as if I had coached you on my lead-in for this piece about learning things. So one of the activities that I was able to participate in, it was a five Bosse's joint effort, and it was about collaborative, it was called Principles of Learning in Virtual Classrooms. And there were, I think there were probably about 30 of us from five different Bosse's participating. Folks from Kayuga, Anadaga, Atsigo, Northern Catskill, Broom, Tioga, Greater Southern Tier, NHFM. And we focused on those principles of learning in our group. And what we're taking away from that, we spent every Friday morning for six weeks from eight to nine with each other. Some was learning, we used Zoom, we were in breakout sessions, we talked about the five different principles of learning. And then we had presentations at the last meetings that we had to talk about how can we help teachers and principals understand that the principles of learning have not changed just because we're in a virtual environment. Some of the teachers were anxious about teaching in a remote environment, and they know how to be good teachers. They've been trained to be good teachers, they just had to remember what those principles are. And the five are a safe and supportive learning environment, the same as what we would want if children were walking into our classrooms face-to-face. if children were walking into our classrooms face-to-face, a clear, that we've identified outcomes and we're clear about them. Same thing in a virtual environment or when they're in front of us face-to-face. We want kids to be engaged and actively participating in their learning. We want to check as teachers for understanding, and we want to provide feedback. So our Instructional Services Division are, participated in this with me, and what we're planning to do is turnkey that as a professional development opportunity for teachers in our region, just to remind them and to help them see the link between those face-to-face interactions with children, while it's certainly a different medium, how we're interacting now, but the tenets of good teaching have not changed. It's just we have to look at them a little bit differently. So I was thrilled that we were invited to participate in this collaborative study, and I always, it was a good use of our time in Instructional Services. Our folks were involved with that, and it was a good learning experience, a good refresher for everybody, and it gave us an opportunity to work with people. That's the other thing that's been a real benefit for virtual learning, is seeing people that we don't always get a chance to see and working with people more deeply and in more meaningful ways because we're using the virtual environment. Many, I don't go visit Southern Tier folks. I would be driving for hours to get to that BOCs to have a meeting with them. So it has shown us different ways where we can interact in really powerful and meaningful learning opportunities with a larger group at greater distances. So I will finish my report there, Dr. Brooks, and turn it back over to you unless there are questions I could answer for the group.
Okay, there being no questions, then we'll move on to the agenda. Typically, our practice is to approve the personnel items. I said consent agenda. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the personnel items A through K on the agenda for tonight.
Make the motion.
Second.
Any of those particular items before we vote? Okay, then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then, the items, personnel items A through K have been approved as submitted for consideration. The next items are the business items. The first business item is the recommendation that the board approved the claim auditors' report that covers May 5, 2020 through May 27, 2020. Do we have a, do we have a motion?
I'll move that.
And do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, are there any questions for Kathy regarding the claim auditors' report? Okay, then, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. The second item B of the business items is the treasurer's report, and it is recommended that the board approve the treasurer's reports for the period from April 1, 2020 through April 30, 2020 as submitted. Is there a motion to approve the report?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
John? Are there any questions for Kathy regarding the treasurer's report? Okay, there being none, I would, I call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? The treasurer's report has been approved. The next item is the extra class report, and it is recommended that the board approve the May extra class report as submitted. May I have a motion, please?
I'll move that.
Okay, and do we have a second? I guess Jim, John and Jim, I think we're in, in on that. Are there any questions for Kathy regarding the extra class report? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the Omni Service Agreement reinstatement. It's recommended that the board authorize the district superintendent to execute service agreement reinstatement by and between the HFM BOCs in Omni effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. All the, may I have a motion, please?
Make the motion.
And a second, please.
Second.
Does anyone have any questions about the recommendation that we approve this service agreement? Okay, there being none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion has been carried. The next item is the Adult Literacy and Corrections Education Service or Space Agreement, and it's recommended that the board authorize the district superintendent to execute, execute the memorandum of agreement by and between the HFM BOCs, the United Presbyterian Church of Amsterdam, and the lease agreement by and between the HFM BOCs and the Avanash and Avanash Mujil effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, to provide classroom and office space for adult literacy and corrections education. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll move that.
Do we have any questions for Dave or whomever about these two agreements? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed to approving these? There being no opposition, this motion is carried. The next item of business items has to do with the Independent Contractor Service Agreement with George Harrington, and it is recommended that the board authorize the district superintendent to execute the Independent Contractor Services Agreement by and between HFM BOCs and George Harrington to work as a part-time facilities consultant effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. May I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
And may I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, do we have any questions for Dave regarding, or whomever regarding this agreement? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And are there any opposed? That motion is carried. The item under business is a bid, our bid recommendations and extensions, and it is recommended that pursuant to the competitive bidding, the board accept the bid recommendations and extensions as noted by memoranda from the chief financial officer in the following areas. And those areas are lottery services, workers' compensation insurance, legal counsel, solid waste, design services for building conditions, survey projects, HVAC services, school physician, copier maintenance services, menu planning, and property and casualty insurance. May I have a motion to approve?
Make the motion.
Okay. And a second, please.
A second.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Kathy regarding any of these, these bid recommendations and extensions? Okay, there being none, then I ask how many people are in favor?
Aye.
And is there anyone opposed? That motion carries. The next item on our agenda will be the report from board members, reports or comments from any board members. Do we have anyone who's got anything they want? Share?
No.
The next item is to announce our events. On July 1, 2020, we have the HFM BOCs Reorganization Meeting at 5:00 PM. On July 29, 2020, we have the HFM BOCs Goal Setting and Special Board Meeting at 5:00 PM. You'll recall that we are anticipating a special board meeting probably in the last week in June. It will be a short meeting for the purposes of conducting the, some of the business that we reviewed in our executive session. And you'll, and we should also be reminded that Matt is going to be providing us with an invitation to the upcoming P Tech ceremony that'll be held at HFM. Anyone have any other announcements of any meetings or events to add to that list? Okay, then, well, we have another exciting hybrid meeting this time, some people face-to-face and some people virtual, and there being no other business on our agenda to come before the board, I would turn it over to Alan.
Make a motion, meeting be adjourned.
I'll second that.
I'll agree to it.
Okay, all those in favor of adjourning the meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That was a good meeting.
None.
Good night, Al.
One hour.